Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting of the Pine Top Lakeside Town Council to order. We do have a quorum. I would ask that everybody make sure that your cell phones are silenced or put on vibrate or something. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
My pledge of allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Frenow?
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day, Lord. We just thank you for every day. We thank you for our country, our state, and this great community that you've given us to live in. Lord, we are also just so thankful for the fall colors that you've given us and the beautiful moon and sunsets that accompany the season. Lord, and as we go into the season, we just ask that you help our community, our town, be known as something different, something that is a community of service and a community of generosity, Lord, just thinking of the families that are hurting. And, Lord, we also ask that you give special protection to our law enforcement, their families in just times of stress and this season as well. Lord, I ask that you give our town leaders and staff wisdom tonight, Lord, and energy and then also patience, Lord. And we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Counselor Frenow. Item B on our agenda tonight is Call to the Public. This is a business meeting of the town council. The town values and welcomes public input. Please address the council as a whole and not individual council members. Do not address staff or members of the audience. Council action on items brought up in Call to the Public is limited by the open meeting law. The council may direct staff to study the matter and reschedule for further consideration at a later date. Items on the agenda will not be heard during Call to the Public and individuals are limited to three minutes. We do have a number of requests to speak tonight, but before we start that, I would like to indulge in just a moment and thank the Fishers of Men and their team, Marty Jarvey, for putting up the flags at the Jack Barker Park. Our parks and Public Works crews were all out there. The vice mayor was there. We had Betsy and Cricket from the library, so it was a great show of support for the Fishers of Men and putting those flags up. They're going to be taken down next Thursday at nine in the morning again, so if anybody is interested in volunteering with that, the more people we have, the quicker it goes. And it's really a wonderful thing that we do for our community. So the first individual that would like to speak to us tonight is Mr. John Whedon. If you'd come up and make sure you introduce yourself and let us know where you live.
Little story I wrote here. It's called Consumer Protection. My wife and I retired our ends since 2009. We have a home in Phoenix. We wanted a place in the pines. Driving around 2012 in Lakeside, we saw a for sale sign on this lot. We called. Woman's husband passed. She's moving to Mesa. We looked at the deed. There was no encumbrances, no easements, no notes. So we negotiated the price and we bought it. We were paying for things as we went along, so... And I had the deed, so the survey wasn't on top of the list of things to worry about. So we built a house. We built a garage, a shop. And while we were working on that, from time to time, the Public Works folks would come out and they just kept chiseling away at this property. You know, they'd cut trees, push rocks. And I didn't really know where the boundary was. And one day, I'm coming up the hill, and as I look up, I see, man, something has changed. And them guys came on our property and cut down a stand of wales. And there was three of them, had to be 100 years old, and they'd, you know, bring a thousand bucks at the meal. And about 12 or 15 others, all well-established, good symbiotic relation. And it was actually a part of a barrier between the street and our backyard. And it was a fire break. If you can set a white oak on fire in the summer, I want to watch. So that's when I told the wife, we need to survey this place and get it fenced. So we had a survey. I looked for a fence builder, but he said, I need to talk to Public Works. A man, his last name was Whipple, came out. I showed him where the restored Ford, Restored Lost Corner monuments were. He said, we need to move some utilities and get an auto survey. And I said, now, do I have to pay for that? And he said, no, the city will. They'll need it. That was the last time I ever saw or spoke to him. Someone has ordered the Director of Public Works to scuttle every attempt I make to take possession of our property. And I know you can't answer a question. I would just... Can I ask it anyway?
We are limited in our response. You can ask your question, but we will not respond.
Yeah. I just wondered, is this group the one that gave that order? That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Whedon. What is your address?
1081 Springer Mountain Drive. It's right up, when you make that hairpin corner at the top of the hill, and then you go to Springer Mountain or Stardust, right there on the corner.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Whedon. Next individual is Jim Beck.
Mayor, Council, Acting Manager. Our country was established as a republic. The definition of a republic is a state in which the supreme power is held by the people. John Adams said, liberty cannot be preserved without knowledge of the people who have the right to knowledge and also have a divine right of knowledge of the character and contact, conduct of their rulers. In this case, the mayor, town manager, and council members. Recently, our town manager resigned. We, the people, have a right to know the details behind his sudden resignation directly after a closed-door budget meeting. We were told there was an issue of unauthorized spending by the manager. It is we, the citizens, that pay the taxes that's used to fund the town. It is our money. We have the right to know and to have our questions fully answered. We do not want to rely on rumors or incomplete answers. When you meet behind closed doors, we citizens can only speculate. Transparency is the foundational cornerstone of our republic. Secrecy in government always leads to corruption. Curiously, a day after the former manager Johnson stepped down, our town financial director also resigned. A short time later, the Public Works Director quit. This all appears to be very suspicious, especially when the issues relate to town spending. Perhaps we need to establish a Pine Top Lakeside Doge to better ensure our hard-earned tax dollars are spent wisely. In the future, we encourage the town to adopt an open-door transparent policy, which would help to eliminate further suspicions and provide for a more informed citizenry. Let's not conduct future closed-door meetings that exclude the public. Remember, compliance is to be complicit. Please answer these questions. Why did Manager Johnson and Director Rodolph suddenly resign? How much money was misappropriated? Was the funds used to raise pay raises? Did any appreciation rewards benefit Keith Johnson, Kevin Rodolph, or Matt Patterson? Did Keith Johnson or Kevin Rodolph refuse to provide accountability for those funds? If not, why weren't they asked to return the money? Did the town deny them severance pay? Why weren't changes, charges filed against them for padding their personal wallets? For how long had the former manager Johnson or Financial Director Rodolph been misappropriating these funds? On another topic, how many town employees hold personal credit cards with charges paid by the taxpayers?
Thank you, Mr. Beck. Appreciate your comments.
You give it to me, Mr. Beck. I'll give it to him at the end.
Thank you. Thank you, Kristi. Mike Mothenbier?
Good evening, Mayor Irwin, Vice Mayor, members of the council, staff, friends and neighbors. My name is Mike Mothenbier, and I have the honor of holding the title as the President of the Chamber of Commerce for Pine Top Lakeside. I wanted to come tonight and share a few updates on what the chamber's been up to in 2025 and what you can expect to see from us in 2026. Our big focus this year has been building a coalition of local support initiatives. We've been bringing together nonprofits, schools, and the business community to coordinate efforts around business growth, workforce development, and overall community vitality. The goal is simple: to work together to make sure our small businesses and entrepreneurs have the resources they need to succeed. I'm also thrilled to share that we're developing a new Chamber app, a platform that will connect residents, visitors, and businesses in creative ways, featuring local events, business listings, exclusive offers, and real-time updates. It's a big step forward in keeping our community connected and engaged all year long. 2025 has been full of momentum and progress for the Chamber. We successfully revitalized the Fall Festival with more participation and energy than ever. The family color run brought together businesses, neighbors, for a fun, family-healthy event. Special thanks to Mountain Retreat Realty Experts, Karen Rubin State Farm, and the Pine Top Coffee House for making it happen. We've hosted monthly engagement events to promote local businesses and celebrate what makes our town unique. In 2026, we will launch the Image Initiative, a community-wide effort to elevate the Pine Top, how Pine Top Lakeside is seen. Image stands for Improvement, Maintenance, Aesthetics, Growth, and Engagement. And it's designed to help businesses revitalize storefronts, improve customer experiences, and strengthen our community's identity. It's all about celebrating our mountain charm, outdoor lifestyle, friendly business community, and a strong sense of home, while creating pride that drives local commerce and tourism. We also have elections underway for the 2026 Chamber Board. The email's going to go out either tonight or first thing tomorrow morning, inviting people and businesses to vote. It's a great opportunity to help shape the future of the Chamber. We're real proud of what's been accomplished and grateful for the council's continued support. Together, we're building positive momentum that will carry Pine Top Lakeside into 2026 and beyond. Thank you for your ideas, partnership, and belief in this community. When we work together, great things happen. I'm confident the best is yet to come. That's a little bit about the Chamber update. I want to shift gears for just a second, and I want to thank all of you for your support of the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee. As you know, my wife and I have been fortunate over the last several years to be able to provide a financial contribution to MIAC, and I'm going to continue that tradition tonight by providing with this check for MIAC. So appreciate everybody's work. Those kids are amazing. I had the chance to spend some time with some of them, actually, this afternoon over Blue Ridge, and they just have, they're full of life, energy, and fun. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. We appreciate all that you do for the community and your generosity with the MIAC kids. Thank you very much. At this time, I would like to invite one of those students to come on up, Gray Brady, if you'd come and tell us what projects are you're working on.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Gray Brady, and I'm here to update the council and community on a few projects MIAC is working on. We are collecting donations to coordinate for Sirens and Sleigh Bells, formerly known as Shop with a Cop. We want to give a warm blanket to all the children participating. Blanket donations can be dropped off at the town hall before Thanksgiving. We're also collecting new and used stuffed animals. We will wash and clean any used stuffed animals and pass them out. If anyone is interested in cleaning out their closet and donating to a good cause, collection boxes are at the elementary school, junior high, high school, and town hall. We are still participating in Backpack Snacks, an organization that provides food for children in the White Mountains who do not have food over the weekend. We helped pack bags a few weeks ago, and their shelves are low. If you're interested in donating, you can drop off individually packaged food, like mac and cheese, granola bars, fruit cups, pop tart, and pop tarts at town hall, or donate directly to Backpack Snacks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We support all of those initiatives that you guys are doing, so it's a great cause. They're doing great things. Karen Smith.
Hello. My name is Karen Smith, and these are my opinions, not necessarily those of anyone else or my husband's. In 26... Let me introduce who I... Do you need my address?
No, that's okay.
Okay. Thank you. 63, my parents bought up here. We've been coming here. We bought, my husband and I bought here in 95. Lived up here ever since and love the community. In 2016, from 2016 to 2024, we've seen a lot of progress in this town that far exceeded anything before that. The purchase of this beautiful building, the recycle center, the Jack Park Barker Park, the purchase and improvement of Woodland Lake Park, the repair and resurfacing of our roads, which were in very bad shape before that time, and a lot of balloon festivals, other events that have drawn people to the town. And in 2025 now, the key employees that made all of the progress possible, that did all the work to do that, are now gone. You guys didn't even cook hamburgers for the town employees and their families for the parade of cars this year. If you think the voters are not noticing what's going on, you're wrong. I've had many people approach me and ask me, what's happened, Karen? We've lost the best town manager we ever had. And I agree with them. And none of you will get my vote in the next election. Well, maybe Stephanie, because I think we need more women on the town council that have some common sense. I have another issue, hopefully a little more positive. I know you have budget shortfalls, and I had a suggestion. My husband kind of boo-hooed it, but I think revenue sharing is something that should be investigated, at least. The town's a business, and I have a lot of experience with businesses. And you don't grow a business with, by cutting and cutting and cutting. You have to increase your revenue. And our town citizens go to Walmart, Ross, Lowe's, Home Depot. They all go to Sholo to shop. And millions of sales tax dollars are being spent in Sholo and not here. And I think Sholo should...
Finish up.
I'm finished. Last link. I think Sholo should be investigated, that they should share some of that revenue with our town. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it, Karen. Is there anybody else that wants to address us this evening? Okay. Thank you. We'll move on then to item C, which is our consent agenda. All items listed are considered routine matters and will be acted by one motion of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the town council requests that an item or items be removed for discussion. Council members may ask questions without removal of the item from the consent agenda, and items removed are considered in their normal sequence. We do have five items on the consent agenda tonight. We've had a lot of minutes. I think Kristi and Mackenzie have been very busy, so thank you both ladies. Are there any questions or comments on anything? I'd entertain a motion. Vice Mayor?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
I second that.
Thank you. We have a motion of second to approve the consent agenda for the discussion. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Item D is business before the council. Public comment will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item after the subject has been announced by the mayor and explained by staff. Any citizen who wishes may speak one time for five minutes on each agenda item either before or after council discussion. Questions from council members, however, may be directed to staff or a member of the public through the mayor at any time. The first item tonight is D1, is discussion and possible approval of the restructuring of the Community Services Department and adopted, excuse me, adoption of the updated Community Service Director job description and new marketing and communications director job description and salary range. Interim manager Kristi Salsko will present this item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item I have for you tonight, Annie's going to pop out here in a second as well, so she can answer any questions on any of the job duties you have, if I can't answer them. She was a big part of helping realign some of these responsibilities. So I just wanted to start off by prefacing that this is not going to add any new positions to this town. We recently had Tony Alba, who retired from the Community Services Director position, and with that, and hi, Annie, as the marketing coordinator. We worked a little bit with Rick Miller on this before he left and then decided to redistribute some of the duties, more accurately aligning responsibilities with each role's expertise. The former marketing coordinator, Annie, her position has been retitled and expanded to Marketing and Communications Director to reflect supervisory responsibilities, Public Information Officer, and then Strategic Communications and Tourism Agency functions. I just want to say a little bit about Annie with that. Annie has served the town for nearly seven years and has consistently exceeded expectations in her marketing, graphic design, and event support roles. Her skill set in communications, branding, community outreach, and digital media will greatly strengthen the town's ability to provide transparent, timely, public information to our residents and visitors. We are fortunate to have her continuing to serve Pine Top Lakeside in this expanded capacity. Annie has moved to a salary position. Her salary range is not changing. The only cost to the town is going to be an increase in the life insurance that directors receive, which is $25.25 a month, for a total of $303. So we're getting quite a value there on Annie. And then I'm just going to give you some key differences between the Community Services Director and Marketing and Communications Director, because we've completely realigned some of these duties. For the core purpose of each position, the Community Services Director will be focused on programs and services that enhance the resident's quality of life for Pine Top Lakeside. This will include recreation, library, services, and cemetery operations. They will oversee internal community-facing functions and partner with nonprofits for delivery services. They'll manage frontline communication interactions and services provided directly to residents. The Marketing and Communications Director, Annie, will serve as the town's PIO, which is the Public Information Officer, responsible for all public communication, branding, media relations, and tourism and promotion. She's going to manage all public messaging, digital platforms, communication strategies, and council and town initiatives. Annie's going to focus on external communication, promotion, reputation, and transparent public information. On the departmental oversight, the Community Services Director will supervise library. We still have Betsy, who will be there as a library manager. And then cemetery operations have been divided up between Stacy and myself, and it's quite a task. So that is something I'm sad, but also happy to hand off. I really enjoyed dealing with the members of the community at the time, just to offer a little bit of support to them. But whoever we hire, I know will do a good job as well. And Stacy and I will always be there to back them up. They will also handle community events. Some will be sad to see Annie go in that, but I think she'll still put a hand in it. She does such a good job at the event. So newly added duties for the Community Services Director will be helping with the library budget oversight, cemetery administration, and then future sports league development. Right now, the sports leagues are going to stay at the Public Works Department, because Melina did say it's so much easier for them to handle those over there. That way Frank knows when to have what field ready. So we were going to kind of put that in this department, but after discussing it further with Director Spillman, we're going to keep it as is, and then anything that's future, comes to us in the future, will be handled in this department. The Marketing and Communications Director will supervise and manage visitor center information, tourism reporting and merchandising, town social media accounts, town websites, town broadcasts, and media interactions, and oversee all communication assets, branding, design, photography, videography, advertising, and messaging. Some public roles and communication responsibility for the communication, or the Community Service Director will be primary public contact for community programs, library services, and cemetery inquiries, represents the town at civic nonprofit collaboration events, and will plan and conduct town-sponsored events. Annie, as the Public Information Officer, will be responsible for press releases, public statements, crisis communication, and messaging on sensitive town issues. She will lead the tourism, marketing, media relations, and public outreach on town priorities such as annexation initiatives and strategic planning. Let's see. She will also justify advertising buys, monitors analytics, and creates public engagement strategies. With those things, I think that we are going to be in really good hands with Annie and hopeful that we'll find somebody to step in and take Tony's place, and we'll have Annie as a part of that committee to help ensure we get somebody who'll do a good job in that position. So if you have any questions, both Annie and I are willing to answer whatever you have.
Okay. Thank you. I do have a couple of questions. First of all, in the Community Services Director, I just want to make sure I'm on the right one here. You've got community partnerships and liaison roles. I personally would like to take out all the names of those organizations and just put down local nonprofits and civic organizations. And perhaps we should also include our neighboring communities, because I think that's important for us to communicate with them. I just think this list is rather arbitrary and not inclusive of everything, and those are going to be subject to change all the time. So I would prefer to keep that out of there, unless any council members have a strong feeling otherwise on that. My other question is, so the Community Service Director is paid out of the general fund, correct?
Yes.
Marketing and communications is paid out of the advertising and the special tax fund.
Correct. Yes.
So it seems to me like some of your duties, some of the duties of that position cross over to the general fund. Has there been any consideration to tracking that, charging the general fund for any of that? Because a lot of that stuff that we've talked about, the town website, and, you know, granted it's communications, but it's not really advertising and promotion.
It has always, since I've been hired, there has always been a crossover. We tried to minimize it as much as we could, but still keep the tasks aligned with skill sets, so that I just had a broader range on everything that I was working on. I do track it, and it has come up in conversation with both Sarah and Gabe, moving forward if we needed to look at any budget aspect for where my time's being invested. Same with Suzie and Alana. It's all being tracked. Same with Suzie and Alana. It's all being tracked.
Okay. It was just a comment, and I don't know that it's really a critical change that we're a consideration at this point in time, but just something that we need to be considering.
Yeah, I think we're really trying to stop splitting budgets so much, but if it does become an issue, we'll talk to JVG about it.
Well, I think anytime you're in a small organization like this, everybody is somewhat cross-trained.
Yep.
And everybody knows kind of how to do other jobs, because we need that. So I just wanted to bring that up. Any other questions or comments from the council?
Quick question.
Yes, Counselor Phillips.
So you'll be the PIO for all departments, to include the PD? So if they have any critical incident, they would refer to you as the PIO, or do they have a separate PIO?
They, so Chelsea was acting as their PIO, and for the time being, unless they decide they want to change that in the future, it would be me.
It'd be under that job description.
Yes. I think, and we've had that conversation with Chief and...
Leave, I could be wrong, but in the state I came from, there's specialty training for PIO for...
There is, which I will have to pursue, yes.
Thank you.
I think Chief Barnes has reached out to Annie on numerous things, because he's usually out at a scene if there's something important, but he gets in touch with Annie, and she takes care of that for him typically already.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'd entertain a motion. Well, I will take a stab at it. I move to approve, I'm sorry, I need to go back to the CDR. I move to approve the updated Community Service Director job description with the modifications that I noted and the new title, Marketing and Communications Director job description and salary range to the town council-approved job titles and salary list as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion to second. Is there further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank you for the work that was done on this. I think that will be some good changes.
Thank you.
We'll move on then to item D2, which is discussion and possible legal action on Resolution Number 25-1796, entering into an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Phoenix and the Town of Pinetop Lakeside. We have Detective Ricky Bunch, who's going to present on this tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. So I'm here to request approval to enter into an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Phoenix and our town and PD. This agreement was, you all originally signed it a little over a year ago. I was reached out from Phoenix PD last month. They said there was some administrative issue that led to it not being fully enacted, and due to leadership changes in our town and with Phoenix PD, they requested that we review it. So this agreement, it covers the Arizona Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. This agreement specifically will provide resources to the town and to the police department to investigate these types of crimes. And this assistance can cover training for anybody that's assigned to the task force. It can also help with any kind of technical assistance, or there is also a funding portion of it. So if we identify any equipment that we feel would help out with these types of investigations, we can apply through them to purchase it, and then they would reimburse us after we purchase it. At this time, we don't have any equipment that we've identified, but it is there and available if we need it. This agreement is for a period of five years, starting once it's fully enacted. And then to kind of hit home on why this agreement's important, I recently worked on a case involving the Arizona ICAC Task Force, so I'm going to kind of go over it so you can see the importance of this agreement. So in September this year, the Arizona ICAC Task Force received a tip of an individual sending child pornography through messaging service, services to other users. They initiated an investigation after discovering that the offender lived in the Pinetop Lakeside area. They passed the investigation off to myself. After that, after my investigation was completed, I ended up arresting in October of this year a 22-year-old male resident of Pinetop for possessing and distributing child pornography. That male was indicted on October 14th with four counts of sexual exploitation of a minor, which is a Class II felony, and he's currently sitting in the Holbrook Jail awaiting trial. So that's just kind of one example of why this agreement could be really beneficial to us. This tip was received from this task force, and being a part of that task force is really beneficial to the town. So I just ask that we kind of move forward and formalize the agreement between our two cities.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Detective Bunch?
I'll make a motion.
Counselor Smith?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead. No questions, okay. Go ahead.
I move to approve Resolution Number 25-1796, entering into an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Phoenix, Phoenix Police Department slash Arizona Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force, and the Town of Pinetop Lakeside, which is Pinetop Lakeside Police Department, and authorize a chief of police as agent and/or his designee for the Town of Pinetop Lakeside to execute all documents necessary to complete this agreement.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion to second. Is there further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank you, Detective Bunch. We appreciate your efforts on this. Move on then to item D3. Discussion and possible approval of employee appreciation for 2025. I think everybody is well aware, and we have a memo in here about this, that the town has been unable to offer any raises to our employees, and we took essentially all of the employee appreciation items out of our budget. And I know that Kristi and all the department directors have been trying to come up with something that we can do for our employees. She asked me my thoughts on that, and I kind of came back to a conversation I had with Betsy Pack recently about the challenges of scheduling when Christmas falls on a Thursday, and that's the day off for everybody, and then everybody has to come back to work on Friday. And it kind of came to me that we cannot give our employees monetary appreciation. But I think sometimes time with your family and off of work is almost more valuable than that. So the option in front of us today is to have our town offices and everything closed on the 26th of December and allow our employees to have that day off with pay. Now, there of course are complications with that. There always are. If we have a snowstorm and our staff is called in to plow snow, or obviously we have to continue covering law enforcement. So the idea behind that would be to allow those individuals who are forced to work on the day after Christmas due to those types of situations to have a personal day off at some point later on in the year, you know, obviously with their supervisor's approval. You know, this is a small thing we can give our staff, but I think that it would show them that they are obviously our biggest asset. So that's the presentation in front of us. There is no additional fiscal impact, because those employees would be getting paid anyway. Historically, those days are pretty quiet as far as traffic from the public, and we'll have emergency numbers available and well posted in advance. So that's, that's what we've kind of come up with to do for our employees, and that open it up for conversation. I'm sorry, Counselor Teysler.
I just, I actually called and had a little bit of a conversation with Kristi about this topic, because we have different town departments. Some of them work Monday through Thursday, 40-hour weeks. There's, there's other, you know, PD, if we get snow, there's other complications like that. So I was actually wondering if it wouldn't be better if we just officially closed the town, not only December 26th, but also January 2nd, and then offered all employees eight hours of paid time off that they could use at their discretion, because some of those people may not be able to have those days off, even though we closed the town offices officially.
Well, and that's why we said that they would have that day, if they have to work that day because of one of those reasons, then they would have another day off that they could take with their supervisor's approval.
Yeah, Mayor, when, I talked with Accountant MacArthur, who also does HR, and in a way to find it to be equitable, because some departments are on this nine-hour, four-hour shift, some are on a 10-hour shift, town hall's on an eight-hour shift, is to make it just eight hours for all employees that are full-time and four hours for the part-time employees. So if they do take another day off, but they are on a 10-hour shift, they might have to take two hours of their, their own personal time, but we would allow eight hours, because it would be equitable across the board.
And I think that's fair, that's kind of the goal that we're trying to reach here, to give that to our employees. So your suggestion is two days.
I was, I was suggesting giving both, closing the town both those days, and I think about like Public Works, for example, they could get their hours in at the beginning of the week, they could take the holiday, and then they could still have that Friday off, because we've officially closed the town, versus somebody else, like at Town Hall, that may have to come in to fulfill that eight-hour work week. If we just gave everybody eight hours of leave to use at their discretion, and then we just closed the town on those two days, I think that would be a pretty phenomenal benefit.
We would just bank it as comp time. You know, directors who are salaried would probably just have to have an extra day of vacation time.
Yeah. So I agree with that. I was kind of hesitant to bring up the January 2nd date, because that is two days, but I am personally fully in support of that, and I know that we can make that work with everybody so that everybody gets, everybody gets that benefit. So, any other questions or comments?
I think it's a great idea, since, you know, we've had these tough budget times, and we haven't been able to, in the past, we had a dinner or something for them, I think it's a great idea. Whoever thought of it, awesome, good job. It's a great idea.
Well, it was a result of a lot of conversations. Anyway, I do think it will be good for the employees, that we value them, so I would like to suggest that we request they use that up by the end of the fiscal year, though.
We can do that.
I don't see any reason why they couldn't make that all happen. I know it's a challenge sometimes, but anyway, so...
Mayor, if you, if you guys could, when you make a motion, because the motion before you probably just states December 26th, but if you want to add January 2nd, and then also with the caveat that they use it before the end of the fiscal year, which would be June 30th, 25, 26.
And so close the off, we want to change the motion to we'll close town offices on December 26th and January 2nd, and employees will be given eight hours if they can't...
Full-time, eight hours? Part-time, four hours?
Okay. Thank you. Would somebody like to make that motion, or?
I'll give it a try.
Go ahead. Thank you, Mike, Vice Mayor.
I move to approve granting Friday, December 26th, 2025, and January 2nd, 2026, as the town being closed, and that all town employees are granted, for full-time employees, eight additional vacation hours. And if they cannot be taking on one of those days, to be taking another day with the approval of their supervisor. And part-time employees, four hours of leave to be used within the fiscal year. Second.
Thank you. Good job. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. I hope everybody is able to enjoy those days with their families. We'll move on then to item D4, which is discussion and information regarding the town manager hiring process. Stacy MacArthur.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. First, I just want to say, I'm sure on behalf of all the employees here tonight, the staff, thank you very much for considering this. It was, it's a great gift. Thank you. I'm very excited to stand before you and give you an update on the hiring process for the town manager. Our committee consists of Commander Dan Wilkie, Marketing Director Annie DeRosa, and myself. You all have been with us on this process, so this will just be a summary, mostly for our residents and our citizens and the staff. We have put up a timeline up here. It's basically what I was going to be kind of talking about. Kind of from the beginning, we all know we received two internal applications and 23 external applications. We asked you all to review all the 25 applications and select your top picks. Our committee then went through all 25 applications and individually graded them. And if we were within a couple points of each other, we discussed it, we talked it out, and we wanted to know, what did we miss? Maybe what did you guys miss? It was surprising. We all came really close. So we averaged our scores, and we, you know, put them on a sheet. What we graded on was education, municipal and government experience, leadership and management, financial management, community and public relations, strategic vision and innovation, professional presentation, and letters of recommendation, local and regional familiarity, and overall fit for Pinetop Lakeside, and council selection. After compiling all of this information, we looked at our scoring and council selection. We watched for a natural break in the scores to select who would move forward. The committee then met with each of you, either individually or in a group no larger than three. We went over the scoring and process and unanimously agreed on the top six moving forward. All six candidates have accepted. Meanwhile, Annie had created and put out a survey on what our community was looking for in the town manager. We closed it, and then we opened it back up, because we had some residents that didn't have time or did not have the opportunity to fill it out. We closed it today. We will use this data to create questions for our applicants during the panel and council interviews. Our panel committee will be held the week of January 13th and consists of two staff, two business personnel, and two peers. A DISC assessment, which is a dominance, influence, steadiness, and consciousness assessment, was sent out to the six panel applicants, and at this moment, four have completed it. This test is to see what leadership style the candidate possesses. The DISC assessment is a simple but powerful way to understand people's behavior and the way they interact with one another. This system describes people and their behavior in terms of broad styles: drive, influence, support, and clarity. This test is not scored. It's basically to consult and provide us with an insight of their leadership style. On November 13th and 14th, our committee is going to Zoom interview with all six candidates. And that it'll be, all of them will be done Zoom. A candidate challenge was sent out, and it's based on leadership and community trust. This assignment will be submitted in writing to the committee by November 3rd. This test will also be graded by the committee and council. The scores from the Zoom interview and written assignment will then be reviewed with council to select the candidates moving forward to the next round. So kind of have a little break, holidays, and we're picking the week of January 12th through the 15th to have our in-person panel interview. We're thinking the 12th or the 13th for that day. And the committee that I talked about earlier, that's who will be doing that interview section. So we had asked, you know, groups and the staff to kind of get, you know, give us an input. Do you want to be part of this panel? We're only going to go with six, so can't keep everybody. And then, so we'll have that public session, and then we will have, that will be, on the 14th, we'll have the finalists, and they will present their written project, and it's going to be 15 minutes long in front of everybody. That will be followed by an invitation-only meet and greet. Community members will be invited to provide feedback through scoring card and comment cards. The committee is working with businesses, community groups, invested residents, and staff to select a group of people to represent all the interest and concerns of Pinetop Lakeside. January 15th will be the council interviews for the remaining candidates in an open council meeting. And hopefully we'll pick and have an offer.
Thank you, Stacy.
Is there any questions? This, go ahead, Council, Vice Mayor.
Go ahead.
Yes, thank you very much, and I just, just for the benefit of those present in the public, and you may not know the actual number because I know it just closed again today, but how many people responded to that? I heard it was over 200, well.
Yeah, I don't know with what, who did, who responded within the last couple of days. But yeah, it was, it was amazing, and we had a lot of great comments. And I don't know if you're all familiar, but the comments are all compiled and sent all to us in a format, so.
Vice Mayor, 209, Annie just messaged me. 209.
209, okay, good.
That's a good response. Okay, you need to change the dates to 26. But that's okay. Just out of curiosity, because we kind of had this conversation before, do you have any idea of how many hours you three individuals have put into this process? I know it's a lot.
I was, I was kind of thinking about that. We spent a lot of time with you all, and we had, we spent two, well, it would be one full day, we spent two full afternoons just going over the applicants. That's not including, you know, discussing anything further. So I would get, I don't know how many hours Annie did on the DISC and all of that. We're well, we're well over 40.
Collectively.
Yes.
So that's a big expense to the town, you know, because we had considered having an outside consultant, so we have spent that in terms of staff time and then some. Okay, that's just a point of interest for me. Okay, are there any questions for Stacy or comments?
Good job. You guys have done a lot of work.
You guys all came in, I joke and say you guys spent a lot of time with us, and you did. Thank you.
It's well worth it. Councilor Heisler.
I just wanted to commend you guys. I know you brought us in and you presented what this process was going to look like. I believe that packet is published in Talk of the Town for anybody that wants to go look at it. I think it was down at the bottom of the page. It kind of outlines the whole process from beginning to end, and I just wanted to say thank you. You guys did, you guys did an amazing job putting that together. I think it was very thoughtful, and it was a very informed and professional work, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's been a great job all the way around. Okay, thank you very much for that update, Stacy. We'll look forward to continuing the process. Item D5 is discussion and possible legal action regarding the salary of the interim town manager. AR Statute's A13, upon public majority vote of members constituting a quorum, a public body may hold an executive session, but only for the following purpose. Item 1 is discussion or consideration of employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, demotion, dismissal, salaries, disciplining or resignation of a public officer, appointee or employee of any public body, except that with the exception of salary discussions, an officer, appointee, or employee may demand that discussion or consideration occur at a public meeting. The public body shall provide the officer, appointee, or employee with written notice of the executive session as appropriate, but not less than 24 hours for the officer, appointee, or employee to determine to be maintained as confidential, or consideration should occur at a public meeting. And item 3 is discussion or consultation for legal advice with the attorney or attorneys of the public body. Vice Mayor?
I move that we go to executive session.
I second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. I failed to mention that the topic of this e-session would be discussion, consideration, and possible salary increase for interim town manager Salsko. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor.